Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, let's call the meeting to order for Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners. It's Monday, August 8, 2022. Join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I believe we had county legal on our first item?
Yes, Commissioners, now's the time for second reading and then subsequent to that, adoption of ordinance number 2022-009. That's the ordinance sending referral to the electors in November to consider psilocybin and whether or not to have those operations in the rural county, the unincorporated county. You'll recall, I think, a little over two and a half weeks ago, you did the first reading. And so again, we'd need a motion for a second reading by title only, followed up by a motion for adoption. After that, we'll get all the paperwork tomorrow to the clerk, and the clerk will proceed with what he does, which is get it noticed and advertised in the paper for any potential ballot challenges. Once that period's gone, then it'll be all put in process to appear on the ballot in November.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Doyle, do you know, I believe I saw where 24 of the 36 counties were in somewhat of this process. Have you seen an update to that?
I have not. The last I saw was something in the low 20s, so you probably saw something more sooner than I'd have.
All right. Okay, so we do need a motion for the second reading?
I'd like to just ask about opportunities to revise the ordinance language. I believe to do so, we would have to go back to a first reading. But two things that I think that this ordinance should include, or at least the measure, the measure language include are a report back to the voters about what the local voting results were on this measure, which was something in the range of 52.8% in favor and a voter margin, about 6,000 voters. I also, one of the problems I have with this ordinance as drafted is that it says, whereas the Board of Commissioners believes that the timing is appropriate to refer this matter to the voters of Deschutes County. I do not believe that, and I did not vote in that way. And so I would like that language to actually say a majority as opposed to the Board of Commissioners.
Certainly, any type of housekeeping changes to the ordinance between first and second reading are appropriate and don't require an additional new reading. Anything that's more substantive would, in essence, trigger, and this would become a first reading today. So we'd have to wait two more weeks for a second reading, which would be too late to get this onto the ballot. We have to have that information to the clerk, I believe, by August 14th or 15th.
So being aware.
With the insertion of the words "a majority of" the Board of Commissioners, would that be a housekeeping, or would that be?
I think that would suffice as a housekeeping. If the Board's inclined to do that as a unit, we could certainly add in that last, whereas, whereas a majority of the Board of Commissioners. I mean, the second page will potentially reflect that as well, because it shows your votes. But we could certainly, if the Board's inclined to do that, we could insert in the last whereas, whereas a majority of the Board of Commissioners.
So being a whereas, I support an edit on that. That's not a problem, because it's not the substantive to the sections. And I would even go as far as saying, you know, a majority support instead of believes, just, you know, belief is a little different than supporting. So let's just, you know.
Or referring this measure?
Yep.
This matter.
So then the last whereas will indicate a majority of the Board of Commissioners supports referring this matter?
Mm-hmm. I support that.
So is that an issue?
I don't believe it's an issue from a legal standpoint of a housekeeping amendment between first and second reading.
As I say, the whereas is really just setting up the context of this ordinance, so I support that.
So it'll read, whereas a majority of the Board of Commissioners supports that referring this matter to the voters of Deschutes County is authorized by ballot measure 109. Now therefore, that's how you want it to read?
Yeah. So, and I, you know, I do, in 109, it referenced, you know, being able to do this. This was provided by that vote. This opportunity was provided by measure 109. You know, one section says, local jurisdictions shall have the authority to bring it to the next general election. So, but I'm not proposing any other changes. I'm just acknowledging that.
I can work with Sharon after the meeting to make sure that the ordinance is corrected to reflect that, and then her notations of first or second reading and the votes will appear on that, and then we'll secure your signatures.
And then the information about the local results for measure 109 in November 2020, I assume that that would be a substantive revision, and...
I believe that would be. I mean, there'll be opportunities for folks, when it gets on the ballot, to put in arguments in support and oppose to it that could point that out as well.
Well, I would encourage us to include those statistics in the measure language itself.
I personally don't want to go that far. You know, people can write it when they want to. I believe that 19 of the 24 rural precincts voted against it. So, you know, there's different sides of the issue, and I'm sure that that will be there. But this first change is fine, a majority of the Board of Commissioners. I'm fine with that if we need a new vote, or do we need a motion?
You would need a motion at this point now for second reading with the amendment as read. And you could do that then by title only, and we could proceed. As far as the measure text, if that's something you want to consider, then I'd need a motion to change the measure text from what's been proposed at this point.
So we can separate those to proceed at this time? I support this change for the whereas, so I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-009 by title only with changes as discussed.
This'd be second reading.
Second reading. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I'll second that motion. Any further discussion?
I'll just say again that I'm skeptical the results of this vote will be any different than they were in 2020, November 2020. And just to be very clear with everyone, this is not recreational marijuana we're talking about. We are talking about medically proven treatments for anxiety, PTSD, depression, and ironically, from the perspective of people who think that this is part of the war on drugs, psilocybin has been demonstrated to be highly effective in treating addiction in cases of substance use disorder. So I believe that this, referring this ballot measure is both unnecessary and an expense to the taxpayers of Deschutes County that we do not need to incur.
Okay, for our vote then, Commissioner DeBon.
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair of OHS, yes. So then, we need to do an adoption?
We need to read just the...
Oh, by title only, yes. And ordinance prohibiting the establishment of psilocybin product manufacturers and psilocybin service center operators within the unincorporated Deschutes County. Referral to the electors, ordinance number 2022-009.
And that's as revised with the final?
As revised with the final whereas, a majority of supporters of the Board of County Commissioners, oh, excuse me, I read that wrong. Whereas, a majority of the Board of Commissioners supports the timing is appropriate to refer this matter to the voters of Deschutes County as authorized by ballot major 109 and ORS 475A 718. Now therefore, just that one line, those two lines.
I believe you folks did, yes. That's what my changes have.
Okay.
So I'll get with Sharon after the meeting.
So now, so I move for adoption?
Now you would need to adopt ordinance 2022-009 as revised here today with the whereas.
So at this time, I'll move adoption of ordinance 2022-009 with changes as discussed.
I'll second that motion for the discussion. Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
And the Chair of OHS, yes, adopting ordinance number 2022-009.
Now, the other piece of this that we haven't discussed yet is the measure language, which wasn't included in our board packet. But my understanding is that it will be sent over to the county clerk's office fairly promptly. And I would like to ask if, since it was not in our board packet, and I didn't have a chance to look at the measure language until this morning, that we defer adoption of measure language that is going to be sent over to the county clerk for a few more days, so that we can study that carefully and maybe even get some public input on it. My understanding is that that is due on August 19th, which means that we do have some time between now and then. And not taking that time to carefully study the measure language, I think, is improper.
So, kind of between agenda items, I think, at this point, because the next item is psilocybin concepts and preferred alternatives for land use. And I think this is the meat, the heart of the issue. It's not, it's already been passed. It's, you know, a legal opportunity. Oregon Health Authority is going to be putting it out there. Where's the land use? Where are we going to allow this? And the three choices we're going to be talking about today is a starting point for the process. This is the discussion. It's the land use. Where are we going to cite this? So...
I disagree. I mean, we just voted on sending a ballot measure over to the county clerk's office. The measure language is tied to that. The measure language is not tied to the draft time, place, and manner rules, which we could or could not choose to do, regardless of the ballot measure. So I think that we need to discuss the ballot measure language in conjunction with the ordinance that you just voted on.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I don't mind if we look at the ballot language. If we bring it back Wednesday, that doesn't put too tight of a timeline on it. That's the 10th. So, you know, let's just do it in other items, or, you know, edit, update the agenda. You know, I'm not opposed to that.
We can do that Wednesday, could we not, Dave?
Sure. Yeah, we have time, certainly. And I can resend this to you. I'd sent this to all of you previously, but I'll send the proposed language. Keep in mind, the caption and the question are limited in terms of words. And so, as is the summary, but we're well within it on the summary. But the caption and the question are about as tight as you can get them, so.
Right. Yeah, the summary is, I think, where I would have the most interest in revisions. And again, one of my, you know, one of the things I'm particularly interested in is reporting back to the voters what the results of this election were in Deschutes County. So...
Yeah, and I don't think I'm going to be supportive of that upfront. I mean, so we're going to say, we're going to put in a ballot measure, vote yes or no. And last time we talked about this, this group of people voted this way. I mean, I just don't see that.
I mean, in my opinion, it's just part of the history. In November 2020, ballot measure 109 was passed by the electors of Oregon, including 52.8% of Deschutes County voters.
Well, I mean, the rest, Commissioner Adair mentioned, I mean, this is the scenario of rural land use, rural land use. We're not representing the land use in the four cities. All the people from the county, all 150,000 or so registered voters are going to be voting on this. It's just information, and I don't see talking about the results of the last as relevant to this as important as the land use of this next memo.
This is, we've, you all have been trying to define this purely as a land use issue. But to me, this is an issue that we need to consider under our authority as the local mental health authority and the community mental health program. Because these treatments have been demonstrated by, you know, Johns Hopkins and a whole bunch of pretty prestigious medical institutions throughout the United States to be highly effective in treatment in a range of behavioral health challenges. And Deschutes County only governs land use in the unincorporated areas, but we govern mental health throughout the county, including the incorporated cities. So I believe that the voters should be made aware of the history of this ballot measure in the county.
We'll talk about it on Wednesday.
Right, Wednesday.
Yeah. You can vote me down, but I will make sure that those points are made.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to item number two. Will, Tanya, Ms. Peter, yes, everyone's here. Thank you.
Back to psilocybin again.
Yes, we've gone a long ways.
I seem to have a lot of items here today. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Tanya Saltzman, Senior Planner. Yes, I'm here with Peter Gatawski and Will Groves, as well as Stephanie Marshall, our new Assistant Legal Counsel.
Welcome.
Very happy to have you. So feel free, everybody, to weigh in if I'm missing something. So I'm here to talk about time, place, and manner concepts to the Board. I do have a presentation, Ryan, if you could pull that up. I have to look it on paper, because I have the worst eyesight in the county.
Are you taking your vitamins for your eyes?
I have, I mean, it is...
Eat more carrots.
It's really bad. It's really bad. They should do studies on me. I love carrots, but... So I will go through kind of the background, and then we will jump into some of those options. Okay. So measure 109, which legalizes psilocybin in Oregon, it automatically opts, as we've discussed, automatically opts cities and counties into the program. And that's the big difference between this and other previous programs such as marijuana. If no action is taken, counties, Deschutes County, would be opted into the program. And again, you all know this, but I'm just kind of reiterating for everybody. The OHA, Oregon Health Authority, which will be kind of regulating this process, the licensing side of things, they're going to begin accepting applications for licenses on January 2nd, 2023. Measure 109 allows cities and counties to opt out, as we just discussed, via ballot measure, and that is going to occur. So on July 13th, the Board held a public hearing to consider referring this measure, an opt-out measure, to the voters. The deliberations were conducted on July 20th. That same day, the Board of County Commissioners voted two to one to approve the ordinance. The first reading occurred that same day, and the second reading occurred five minutes ago. So at the same time as that discussion, the Board did recognize the need to develop time, place, and manner regulations. This is in the case, if the opt-out is overturned. In other words, if the voters decide that they do want to have a psilocybin program in the county, the Commissioners decided that it would be a good idea to have some regulations in place. So measure 109 does contain some limited land use criteria, and I'll get into kind of what TPM, time, place, and manner means, just to provide an overview of the basics that are baked into the measure. Psilocybin service centers can't be located within 1,000 feet of a school, 500 feet if there's a physical barrier, such as a river or a mountain or things like that. Manufacturing facilities have to be located indoors, and manufacturing facilities cannot be located in single-family dwellings. So with that, measure 109 allows counties to develop what they call reasonable time, place, and manner regulations. So that is kind of the mechanism by which the Board can embark on this process that we are beginning to embark on. We've had some discussions about the timeframe of everything and how there is limited time to develop these regulations if we, if the county is going to begin accepting applications at the first of the year. So it is kind of a truncated process. Given that, and also the rulemaking done by OHA is not yet complete. Some bits are in place. There are some recommendations in place from the Psilocybin Advisory Board, but not all of the rules are in place. So it puts everybody, frankly, whether it's the Board or the public or the industry, in a little bit of a difficult position to try to estimate those potential impacts, because we don't necessarily know the shape of what these uses might take. So given this timeframe, you know, in a perfect world, if we had more time, staff would love to, you know, convene working groups and sessions and listening sessions, and to discuss all of these, all of these matters that could really contribute to extensive time, place, and manner. But the reality is that we don't have that time if we want to have rules in place by the beginning of the year. Things that we would like to talk about, but don't really have the means to kind of drill down into operational characteristics. What does a service center look like? How big of a lot size do they need? What kind of setbacks might they need? How many employees or patients might be involved? So that would kind of help dictate the size of these operations. What are the needs concerning overnight lodging? If you have overnight lodging, is there food service, and how does that shake out? And then, two additional things to consider, if we were able to, is how does this impact GO5 and wildlife inventories that are already in place? And how does this impact GO12, which is transportation and traffic impacts? It's a little bit difficult to estimate traffic impacts when you don't quite know, you know, the scope of these operations. So it's, we're in a bit of a difficult spot. So this all leads up to the way we have provided or presented these potential options. Just, I'm setting the stage for the limitations that we're operating under right now. Yes.
No, I just, it seemed like our slide was behind you.
Oh, no, I'm just, sorry. So now, I'm going to offer three regulatory concepts for consideration. There's a more extensive table provided in your memo. I couldn't squeeze that quite all into the screen, but I have the main bits of it on the screen, or I will. And I'll note that the difference between the concepts is basically in the manufacturing slash production categories. Measure 109 recognizes psilocybin-producing fungi as a farm crop and a farm use, and therefore, it's permitted outright in EFU zones. And I'll get into that a little bit later. If a county chooses, it can also be recognized in other zones where farm or forest uses are allowed. And that's going to be sort of the main difference between these options, just how many other zones will the Board choose to permit manufacturing and production? The kind of baseline is EFU, but you can go beyond that if there's other farm and forest allowed there. And then lastly, well, not lastly, next, all three concepts prohibit psilocybin service centers outside of zones that already allow medical centers or clinics or retailer service centers, and would only allow daily operations. And we recognize that this is fairly limited. And this is mostly, well, there's a lot of reasons, but the main constraint is that by keeping the service centers limited, it doesn't trigger transportation findings. So if you're allowing it in a larger capacity that is kind of beyond the uses that are already allowed in those zones, it triggers having to do extensive analyses that we might, well, we don't have time to do. So for that reason, we're limiting the service centers and all three options to kind of medical centers and clinics, and I'll see which zones those are allowed in. Staff is proposing that as a starting point, where there's kind of similar uses. We anticipate the traffic trips generated wouldn't be any higher than those uses. So that's the kind of impetus behind that. So for all three concepts, the psilocybin service center options are the same.
Question?
Yes.
To daily operations, are we referring to daytime business hour window operations?
Yes, no overnight, essentially. What those hours specifically might be would remain to be seen, but the point is that it wouldn't trigger that overnight lodging aspect of things. So whether that's eight to five, or, you know, it's just in one day, no overnight.
And that's in the measure? Talked about daily operations?
No, that's not in the measure. That's just due to the need to kind of confine, given the timeframe, the service centers into uses that are comparable to other uses that are already allowed in those.
Kind of working with county code, if it was going to be a medical center, a medical service building of some sort, it'd be mirroring that use or whatever, so...
It wouldn't be any more intense in terms of...
That's the path that we have, okay.
That is the simplest path for now. And I will go into, you know, I know there's probably, there may be interest to do things that are beyond that, for sure. And we're not, we're not necessarily saying no to that, but we're just providing a starting point for these things.
Yep. And that's, you know, the daily operations term just came up a few times, so I was just trying to talk that through a little.
Just in one day. We don't know exactly when yet, so.
So, sorry, I have a couple of questions as well. My understanding is that there are a number of these facilities in California and the San Francisco Bay Area, and that they, there are also facilities like this in other countries. Now, would those provide enough of a basis to be able to do the traffic impacts analysis, or, you know, what are the traffic impacts analyses based off of, like, comparable facilities in other places? Or, you know, how do we do that?
That's a really good question. I wasn't aware of any in California, but I've definitely heard about the ones in other countries. I think that helps provide some sort of parameters, but it doesn't necessarily specifically pertain to what's in our code and what's on the ground in Deschutes County. I think it might be helpful, but it won't be exactly apples to apples. I don't know, Peter, if you have other thoughts on that?
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. It is a good question by Commissioner Chang. The challenge that we are experiencing now is we're the only state in the Union that's lawfully allowing psilocybin, the psilocybin industry and the psilocybin service center. So we, while there may be psilocybin treatment areas in other parts of the country, they're not lawfully established. So those are all underground. Oregon is the first state to regulate psilocybin. And whether Europe, what Europe does, I, hard to apply a European model to Oregon's land use system. And, you know, so we, the questions are excellent. At what point does it, you know, does legislative amendment need to demonstrate or have an understanding about trip generation? And we don't know, you know, what a retreat center would generate, how many employees it would hire, how many patients it would have at any one time. The moment you have overnight accommodations, you're going to need to be providing food service. And that just reflects our understanding today. This, I think, could be an evolving industry. This, I think, could be an evolving industry. Our approach was to apply, looking at the intensity of the use, those uses that are in commercial areas or rural service center areas where, you know, likely they're going to have less visitation if there's not overnight lodging units because of, for anyone that's watching at home, those that want to utilize psilocybin have to be 21 years or older. So vehicle trips may not be necessarily a huge disruptive factor, which gave us the thesis that, okay, as we look for service centers, which zones are we aware of that have a medical clinic or, what was the other term? Medical clinic?
You know, or service center.
And or retail-like use, because it seemed like it would, it could naturally fit into that methodology. This is an approach that we've talked about with Wasco County, we've talked about it, I think Hood River County and Jackson County are likely going to pursue the same, the same approach. When you get into the rural zones, and I'm expanding on your question, that's when you're looking at, you know, Goal Five implications, the testimony that this Board heard during the opt-out hearings, there's, there seems to be some significant interest in retreat centers operating with overnight accommodations. At that point, we're acknowledging at staff that we are in uncharted territory, and so it informed these alternatives to the Board while recognizing that during the legislative process, we would benefit by hearing from the industry in their own language, in their own experience, articulate how to broaden these opportunities within the confines of, you know, state law and our comprehensive plan. So I don't know if I answered your question perfectly, but it seemed like that context is why we, why we structured three alternatives for your consideration today.
So there is this opportunity to come in on a case-by-case basis and demonstrate that your proposal complies with state law, basically.
We would, I would add, Commissioner, if you, if there's, we get enough input from you today, or if we need to come back on Wednesday, I think we could come back on Wednesday too, to refine, but we would want to put some, we would define a psilocybin service center, how it operates, to demonstrate that we're compliant with Goal 12 and trip generation and whatnot. If there is support for allocating it to those areas in our code where there are similar uses. Similar uses being retail centers that are, retail establishments that are operating during the day, medical clinics that are operating through the day. It's when you, so we would define service center so that it didn't go beyond what, a use that could be applied with overnight accommodations, because we don't have those overnight accommodations in rural service centers or in the Tumalo Commercial District or in the Terribon Commercial District. So we're, we're using the existing zoning construct to define service centers in our code.
So occupancy use was one of the other questions that came up. It was someone who read through the, these three approaches, you know, said to me that they thought the occupancy, the appropriate occupancy use was not medical centers and not retail, but rather a professional service business, as opposed, you know, medical clinic, I see some consistency, but retail centers, I mean, people are, people are not buying psilocybin and taking it away, they are, they are going to get a service. So that, this person thought that the appropriate legal interpretation would be to assign these service centers to the professional services occupancy use. And I don't, I'm not a legal expert, so I don't know whether that's here or there, but they, they seem to imply that that would leave us vulnerable to legal challenge.
Yeah, and thank you for that clarification and from the concern from the constituent. The, we, let me underscore that we recognize that psilocybin service centers are not retail establishments. We were, the, Tumalo, there are areas in our zoning code that allow commercial establishments. Some of those commercial establishments have a medical affiliation with them, others do not. And so to the extent that the Board, as a starting point, wants to consider allowing a psilocybin service center in the Tumalo Commercial District, we thought retail, just based on its intensity of traffic, service centers would fall well below that because the number of patients that would probably use it would be much smaller, much, much smaller than a retail establishment. It was a way to justify that this was a, a use of similar intensity, likely lower, that if the Board wanted as a starting point, we could justify adding it into that zoning construct. So again, we had to step back and look at our zoning code and look at uses that could have the same operational characteristics, visitation, trip generation, have parking requirements, et cetera, that this use could fit in rather nicely. Where it gets complicated is in the rural zones, because the rural zones don't contemplate a retail or a therapeutic use that acts like a commercial use in the rural county. But we do have these specific zones where there's, in our rural communities, in our rural service centers, where there are those pockets of more intense commercial activities. And that's where we were trying to structure as an alternative for the Board to consider how service centers could be a use allowed in those zones.
Wait, let me ask another question to kind of dig into this a little bit more. If a, if a therapist wants to set up shop in a place like the Tumalo Commercial area or other unincorporated parts of the county, what occupancy use would they be classified under?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Your Planning Manager, Will Groves, you can summon me with questions like this or by saying my name three times in a mirror. So glad to help out this afternoon. So to add on a little bit to Peter's response to the last question, when we were trying to find similar zoning opportunities, we tried to think about what this might look like from somebody watching the use operate. And it probably looks like a car arrives at a property, someone goes into a building, the building likely has no external impacts, you know, it doesn't have smoke, glare, noise, flashing lights that would make it incompatible with other similar uses, and then the person leaves the building. So things that look like that were retail and commercial. So for example, retail commercial service centers. And in many zones, they're referred to as retail service uses. So if you wanted to teach piano lessons, if you wanted to cut hair, if you wanted to prepare taxes, those things would all fall in a kind of these retail service zoning areas. Those two types of uses are seen as compatible with each other and sit well next to each other, and so that's why you see them in most zones together.
But you don't, you don't go for a piano lesson for 12 hours?
No, certainly not, but the, so I think the difference would be, and your point's well taken, is that you'd probably see less traffic, right? But still, the basic configuration of, you need a parking lot, you need an enclosed space, you don't need a lot of other things that you might need for other types of uses, you know, like, for example, if you were going to have equine therapy, you know, you need a space for horses. And that's not something that would be associated with this use, so that's why that was picked as a, as a similar, as a similar match. But you're right, that it probably has significantly lower traffic impacts, that there's probably not the turnover that there would be with like a hair cutting establishment.
Right, well, mentioning equine therapy and kind of the need for the space for horses, it does raise a whole nother question for me, which is, I think we will get, so for me, rather than approaching this from a zone-based approach and constraints, I really think we should be looking at this from a scale perspective, because that's what people are really worried about. They're worried about, they're worried about, you know, a massive psilocybin production facility being located in their, you know, adjacent to them. And I actually really think that, you know, assuming that the voters choose to allow psilocybin production and service centers in unincorporated Deschutes County, that's what they want. They don't want to see very large facilities, they want, they would want to see cottage-scale operations. And I think that by, in a couple of these approaches, the two are separated, the production and the service centers. I think we actually will get the smaller scale facilities if, by encouraging them to be together. You know, when Ryan Reed came in here and talked about his, you know, the facility in their business plan, 1,500 square foot building, 500 square foot basically shop, you know, next to the building, I mean, it's, you know, it's like a small house and a small garage that, you know, when paired together lead to a relatively modest footprint facility that can serve a huge amount of the potential demand for this service in Deschutes County. So I think we want to, we want to actually be encouraging the combination of the two things, because if you, if you set up a production facility, just to be a production facility, they're going to have to be supplying to a whole bunch of service centers, which will encourage them to operate on a much larger scale. I mean, you know, that their, their business is dependent on wholesale, wholesaling fungi, as opposed to their business being dependent on, you know, production of a, of a product and then administering a service. So just in terms of the whole approach to this, I think we should be looking at it from the perspective of, like, how do we keep the scale modest? One key to doing that, I think, would be encouraging the combination of the production and the service center together. And, you know, I get, like, I still just kind of keep wondering why we don't approach this from a scale perspective and put thresholds on the size of production facilities and service centers, and then not be so worried about zones.
You know, Commissioner, one of our challenges, and I think you will talk about it under another item today about rural ADUs, I think, as it pertains to Senate Bill 762 and the wildfire mapping, I think that there's, both of those processes generate some significant headwinds. And the headwinds are that the state has been directed to undertake some significant, in this case, back to psilocybin rulemaking. And with Senate Bill 762, it's a wildfire map that had to be completed in a very condensed timeframe. Our disadvantage is that, it's not just Deschutes County, it's all the counties in Oregon. There was never enough time to create a, what you're asking for, I think genuinely, is to understand the right scale and to understand the operational characteristics, it's really well-served by a working group, a technical advisory committee. As this Board knows, there was a marijuana advisory committee that provided input on how we would regulate that industry, subject to time, place, and manner regulations. One of the things that we acknowledge is, I mean, yes, could the Board establish scale, square footage limitations, number of patients? You could amend the code in any of these rural, some of these commercial districts that we have in our unincorporated communities, don't allow agricultural or farm uses, you could amend, you could direct us to amend the code to allow that as a use permitted outright. I think the broader question is, local governments don't know what this industry really needs. We have an understanding that they're going to have to hire facilitators that are going to have a certain amount of training. We know that the insurance is going to be significant, that, you know, to the extent that they want overnight accommodations, you're talking about, you know, providing food services, depending on the number of patients and employees and food, gray water, you may need a much larger onsite septic system, which may be, may be a system that the state, the Department of Environmental Quality regulates. You go down that path, and all of a sudden, this is not a, a use that older Oregonians who own a small property and a little house are going to invest in. The upfront capital costs, I think, are significant under the retreat-style model. And we haven't talked about transportation SDCs, we haven't talked about the service center building being permitted as a, as a commercial structure with sprinklers. I mean, it is a, it is not a inexpensive endeavor. Having said that, though, you know, whether the Board wants to use today, and if you want us to come back on Wednesday, to provide as much guidance as possible to, to inform what would be just amendments to start the public process, and I want to just underscore that again, I think the value of initiating the legislative amendments is it, whether we get it right, or whether it's, it's off a little, or we haven't contemplated a certain use category, by having the amendments and some findings, it allows the public process to be, to start and allows the industry to engage. And we really need to hear from the industry. Are they interested in cottage-like uses in some of our little commercial hamlets in our rural service centers in Tumalo and Terribon? I don't know, but they would be well-versed to let us know, and to, and those types of amendments could ultimately, if directed by the Board of County Commissioners, be incorporated into our code. So all these are excellent questions. In a perfect world, we would have more time, and the Board could have directed us to undertake, you know, a larger work scope on this.
Chair, if I may just, ask a follow-up question. So if, if we're silent on scale or size, then people may not be engaging on that issue in the first hearing. Whereas if we do start with a proposal, as you said, it could be off-kilter, it could be wrong, it gives somebody, something, the industry and everybody to react to. So for example, if we started with something small, I'm just going to be 2,500 square feet, 3,000 square feet, 3,500 square feet, I don't know what the right number is, and clearly we don't know the right number, and we're not going to have a work group, if we at least started with something, then the hearing process may invite comments, so that, that's a de facto group. I'm just trying to think, to get to your question, is there something we start with to engage the public, and then as you said, the hearing process can result in an amended proposal as it proceeds? Just a thought, I don't know what the right number is, if that's even of interest for the full Board.
And the other thing that I think is worth mentioning, and we noted it, Tanya noted in the memorandum, is I think this is going to happen for, Deschutes County is going to go through its own process, Wasco, Hood, and Jackson Counties as well. I wouldn't be surprised, just given the limited timeframe, that the amendments for some jurisdictions will be rather, rather conservative. Wasco County is the one that we have been coordinating most recently, and they're, they're approaching, you know, production manufacturing on EFU, their concept, we're ahead of them in terms of the conversation with the elected officials, and then service centers to be located in rural commercial areas. But what, when we were chatting with them, and what we've realized and what's noted in the memo, is just because in the event that the amendments are imperfect by the time that they're adopted in late December, doesn't mean that the Board of County Commissioners can't direct CDD at some point to initiate a work program, to convene a working group, to talk to the stakeholders and, and discuss the operational needs and characteristics of this industry, nor does it prevent the industry on its own to initiate a legislative amendment to address Goal Five, to address the transportation planning rule, and, and the zones and the districts that they believe are the most appropriate to accommodate this new industry. So again, this isn't as if the Deschutes County or any county in Oregon that's considering TPM only gets one bite at the apple. There remains a process. This is really a starting point to get some meaningful, albeit modest, time, place, and manner amendments in place in a relatively short period of time. The first hearing if the Board directs us to undertake this program would be late September. So you're talking- So you're talking a very compressed planning commission schedule and then a very compressed schedule with the board. So Nick's not, not incorrect that if you want to expand it as much as possible now as part of the amendments, you may get more direct feedback. But I do see, I do think that the timeframe in general may limit how far the county can, can apply TPM, you know, in the rural areas, just because of the lack of understanding of what the industry needs, some of our own regulatory systems, how it fits in with our comprehensive plan as well.
If I, if I might add on there to, to put a, kind of a point to this, is that one thing that could happen is that if a, if amendments aren't completed by the end of the year and we start receiving applications, we receive them under the current code. And as we came forward to you in the memo, that's, it's certainly an imperfect process. I think we would see a lot of hearings, officers' hearings, matters coming to the board as first impression. Our code isn't well set up to receive that. So although there's certainly a variety of approaches to this, and you can see that in the memo, in particular EFU zone service centers present a real challenge in terms of trying to get those ready in time. I think that those, to Peter's point, those come with Goal Five resource inventories, they come with unknown transportation challenges. And as much as there might be industry interest in sort of overnight service centers with, you know, large lodges, yurts, food services, that may be, that may be something, a plane that would be hard to land in the time that remains to implement this. And that's why we had discussed this opportunity of maybe doing this effectively in two phases with a first phase of providing some orderly opportunity for those people who need these services, to have them in zones and places where other similar services are provided, and looking to a second step to either the industry or board direction to look at something, a broader service center that was, I mean, certainly, I've, I understand the, the medical benefits of this and I would still have some real hesitancy about having one as a neighbor, you know, a large, a large service center, just as I would regardless of the use, just, so now there's going to be 30 people across the property line driving and going, you know, people have the same concerns just with guest lodge. We've seen really vigorous neighbor, neighbor concerns about just overnight lodging period. So just trying to separate out the, maybe the easier stuff from the harder stuff as we think about this.
And one other point that, that's noted in the memo and I footnoted it, and the county has, has some limited experience with it, doesn't come into place, as I understand it, with legislative amendments, but it will come into place if, if and when service centers are allowed on, on exclusive farm use zone property. And you'll remember, there's a private airstrip that's been proposed on property in exclusive farm use zone, and, and they had to address what's called a farm impact test. And that's relatively, that, that law, that requirement is getting more and more refined. It came out of a, a case involving a landfill in Yamhill County, but it requires uses that aren't agriculturally, that aren't farm use, anything, anything that's, has much more intensity to it, to go through a farm impact test. That, that means identifying the study area, you have to do a farm-by-farm analysis, and to demonstrate ultimately that this new use, that's not predominantly a farm, farm use or farm crop, is compatible with other exclusive farm use zone properties that are, that are being put in production. That doesn't, that's not to say that psilocybin, a psilocybin service center couldn't be found to be compatible, but it's a rigorous analysis that will have to be met. And, and, and I raise that only because it's another acknowledgement that for staff to, to come up with development standards around EFU property, knowing that there's going to be the subsequent requirement among other findings for an applicant ultimately, I'm not sure that's necessarily the best process. I think we, we really need to hear from the industry if they are, if they are, if they do have their sights set on EFU, you know, how they're thinking about it. And I dare say that up until maybe Dushut's County even acknowledging this obligation, the industry wasn't thinking about it. And, but they're going to need to, in addition to other factors relating to the transportation planning rule and other factors relating to, as we talked about in our county at least, where we have an existing robust Goal Five inventory of wildlife habitat. This is a new use, it is, could be seen as a new conflicting use. And so doesn't mean that you, it can't be accommodated or subject to some limitations to minimize its impacts, but that is a rigorous analysis and it's not an analysis that staff can do in the short period of time. Again, because we don't understand the operational characteristics of this new industry.
So Tanya, do you have any feedback on how the state is doing with their rules? Okay, we're into August now.
They're, they're humming along.
Humming, okay.
They have, their website is very active. They are, they're currently in the process of getting together the advise, what's it called, the committee-
The Rules Advisory.
Rules Advisory Committee.
Yes, rules.
They've done kind of one packet of rules back several months ago that didn't really pertain much to land uses, more about testing and safety and things like that. They have, I think their next set of rules are coming out in, it's either September or October. The meetings for the Rules Advisory Committee were in September. It's all going according to their schedule, but it is, you know, stretching out into the fall. But they are moving along for sure.
Yeah, and Tanya's correct on this. So based on Nick's encouragement, I applied to represent the county as part of that Rules Advisory Committee. It seems like it's mostly directed towards medical professionals or fungi-growing specialists, but I thought it would be helpful, we thought it would be helpful to have someone with the land use coordination on there. So I've applied for that and if accepted, I'd be attending meetings in September to support their-
When will you know if you're accepted, Will?
I don't know. I'll, we'll have to see when I get an email back. I think they had a time and process for that.
Okay, I mean, I just, that's good to know.
I believe that the deadline applies in a couple days, right?
Yes.
But they are moving along according to their process and they send out a lot of emails and they're, you know, keeping everyone apprised, so.
Okay, so this overnight issue, that seems like a lot to consider, and especially if they're thinking of having, you know, like 30 people there or something. Do we, as it stands now, for, with all the service centers that you've, you know, in, let's say, the most least restrictive one option, such as the Sun River Town Center District, so are we saying that we could allow something to be overnight?
Right now, all of our three options, or sorry, none of our three options-
Allow overnight?
Overnight.
Okay.
They're all the same in terms of service centers, our options, and they're all just daily operations and, yeah, no overnight.
Okay.
Again, as Peter and Will have both said, this is not to say that there could be a, a second phase where this is explored or we hear from the industry and they pursue a legislative amendment, but the, the, the options, the concepts that we're putting on the table right now do not include overnight accommodations.
Okay, well, I, I personally, I appreciate that. I think that's what you said too, Will, wasn't it? Something along those lines?
So just returning to the concept of, of integrated facilities probably being one of our best strategies for containing scale, option three is basically the only option where we are allowing production to happen in the same zones as service centers. Is that correct?
Let's see, option three, option three, the, sorry, of course, they're on different pages. The service centers are the same throughout for all three options, so yeah, for instance, production could be in option three in rural commercial, and we would allow service centers in rural, that does have the most overlap, correct?
Yeah, so the, the way the zone is structured today, under the rural commercial and rural ser, service center zones, you can have an agricultural farm use there, and you can also have a use that's, that's, that's commercial, which would therefore, in our estimation, could allow a psilocybin service center to occur as well. So under, in those two areas, you could have seed to sale or seed to consumption.
I think it's spores.
Or spores.
I was thinking, did they start with seeds?
Now, the board could direct, could direct us to amend, you know, the Sun River commercial, I mean, whether it's practical or not, that's, that's a question for the board, but you know, you, if, if the board wanted to direct staff to amend certain commercial districts or town center districts to allow for the, you know, for a farm use or an agricultural use, then you could, you could allow the production and manufacturing and the service center to theoretically occur on the same property. It's, it's hard for us to go the other way into the commercial use going into rural zones.
I think Ryan was actually saying that 500 square feet would be adequate for production of Dushut's County use, something like that with his plan.
The-
And yet, didn't the sheriff's office break, I think they had something like a 1,500, 1,900 illegal grow of mushrooms that they had to stop?
That's, that, that's part of what I'm talking about with separating the service center from the production. I really do think that, you know, if, if you have a, if the two things are tied together, the production is going to be scaled to what, what they can use at the service center. So instead of having a black market operation that is trying to produce for many, many, many purchasers, many wholesale purchasers, if you can call, you know, black market buyers, wholesale purchasers, you would have a service center with a couple of, you know, some number of rooms, and, and the production would be tied to how many people you were trying to, to administer psilocybin to. So that, that's why I keep pushing back on this, you know, like, how do we actually encourage, encourage the co-location of those, those two things?
You know, it may be possible to, given the very minimal space requirements for growing these, in particular, if you were growing a vertically integrated grow to support a particular center, you know, if 500 square feet, you know, and that's consistent with other things that I've heard, supports the entirety of Dushut's County, a particular service center may need 50 square feet.
Right.
And so one of the things that might be possible is to include as a accessory use, you know, incidental indoor production of, you know, of, of psilocybin in a, in a service center, or in some, in something that was otherwise, yeah, in a service center.
Right.
So, you know, I, I think that's a question for the industry, but you know, are there any special health and safety concerns or, you know, operational concerns if this is growing in a closet in the back of a place in the Sun River Town, Town Center? Is that an appropriate production location or is something, does that present externalities or problems for the neighbors or is that not a suitable place to produce a product?
Do we know, though? I'm not sure the rule, like, this is the problem with the rulemaking that's happening, is I'm not sure that the production and manufacturing of psilocybin can be in the same structure as the service center.
I'm looking right now, I think there's some-
I thought they had to be separated.
Somebody was, somebody was asking about that, you know, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, you know, licensed professional counselor, something where, where they could be a therapist. So like, I'm a, you know, I'm a therapist by practice. I'd love, you know, I could, you know, I could go get licensed, I could, you know, grow a little bit of fungi in my closet at my office and, you know, that would be, that would be all I would need. But i- if it needs to be physically separated, then it doesn't sound like that would work.
It does say a person may hold both a manufacturer license and a service center operator license at the same or different premises. I think it drills down a little more later, but, so I think there is anticipation of that, you know, co-location to be available. But I think they might have something about kind of walls and stuff like that. I'm looking for that now.
Aren't they supposed to be wearing special protective clothing? I mean, isn't that something that was person-
You don't want to breathe the spores in.
Right.
Yeah, it's like a clean room kind of thing.
Exactly. With a ventilation system that's at the highest standards.
I mean, I, again, I think whether there's an, and we know that you have a, a full afternoon agenda, we can certainly, I, you know, if you want to contemplate these alternatives, we could come up under other items on Wednesday, just because we are seeking direction, if that's helpful. You know, I do think through the, through the, the public process, through the hearings, that you will, you may likely hear from industry representatives that have, that make arguments that a psiloc, psilocybin service center should be or can be located on, say, EFU property as long as it maybe matches equine therapy, like, you know, so it's not an overnight accommodation. So they're trying to, they may try to find similar uses, but it would be day uses that, you know, which allowed them to, would allow the county under these, under this theory to demonstrate, well, those uses are, have a same, kind of similar intensity, they've already gone through, you know, the, the wildlife-related impacts, so you, you might be able to make an argument that you don't need to go through a, a Goal Five analysis because the use is so similar to existing uses, and then the same would be for trip generation. The, the question is whether or not that's really what, what the industry wants, but it would, again, it would give them that opportunity, we would ultimately define how, what, we provide a definition of what a service center is and is not. So if it was aligned with more of a daily operation of what we might find is commensurate with a, you know, an agritourism type of activity, I'm not saying that this is agritourism, I'm just saying it is a similar intensity, there might be a, a legal way of doing that. But we approached this memo with, again, the, the understanding that, that most of the interest was for much larger, retreat-oriented opportunities, but that, that could, could occur. And I, and, and we would welcome that kind of input because we, there really just hasn't been enough time to reflect and think about all these iterations and how they align to the code or don't, and, and so the public process could help bear that out.
So Commissioner, Commissioner Chang, can we bring this back then and other items on Wednesday? Would that work? Do you have a definition then for service center at this point in time?
Yes.
That you're using-
The state, we have the state one.
Okay.
We, we do not, and would look for, we, we would take your direction.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're staying admittedly at the, you know, 10,000 to 30,000 foot level, hoping that maybe on Wednesday you could give us enough direction with enough alternative, with any refinements, and then that would provide the basis to build the code, a draft code with the findings, and then we'd go through the public process. So we would define, Chair Adair, if, if the interest was to really make sure service centers, wherever they are, are only operated on a daily basis with no overnight accommodations, that, that would, that would be incorporated in ultimately a definition into, into our, into our codes as it pertains to this specific use.
Right, forgive me, they have a, a state definition, but it's obviously not pertaining to land use and it's very-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tanya.
So leaving the, leaving the question of overnight lodging aside, would these options, like, with that, with that guiding principle of encouraging co-location of facilities, might these three options look a little bit different? Like, if you, if you, if you use that as a guiding principle and then tried to design your options accordingly?
I mean, right now, as you noted, option three really is the only one that allow, that kind of has that overlap, you know, if you had a Venn diagram of the zones that, so we would have to kind of further explore that if we want to, if that was the direction that the board directed us to explore, we could probably figure out more kind of minutia within that option to provide sub options, as it were.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Sure. I mean, it, you know, I'd like, I'm, again, you know, I'm, I'm not averse to restrictions, but like, I mainly want to see the restrictions around scale as opposed to, to zones, but, you know, posing option three as the least restrictive, but the only place where you could achieve that co-location, it just kind of, it doesn't, it doesn't strike the right tone in some ways, you know? So I was, I was just wondering whether, if we use that guiding principle, there, there would be, options might look different.
You limit- You limit the psilocybin service center to function as a, a, a daily commercial activity than the question, there's a possibility when you look at, I'm just reaching here, but you, you, you might be, there might be ways to justify it in MUA 10, EFU, RR 10, UAR 10. I mean, so if you're, if, if you're interested in co-location, the rural zones are the natural inclination for that because they allow farm and agricultural use today. The key is to try to find a use that exists today as a daily, as a, that has, has a certain intensity, a daily intensity that, uh, with some, some development standards or with some operational limitations could be argued, uh, matches those existing uses, but admittedly, that's a, it's a bit of a stretch because you don't, you don't see medical clinics or metal, you know, uh, uh, facilities, um, on rural zones and, you know, we've heard that this is, obviously the emphasis is for therapy, but there, there may be other uses that we could squint at that might have the same trip generation that we could try to justify. It could be, someone could challenge it, but that's, uh, something for you to consider.
Yeah, yeah.
If I might, uh, to add another bookend to this, is the thing that's allowed in Measure 109 is reasonable, uh, time, place and manner regulations. So one of the things that that brings to mind, of course, is now you're thinking about health, safety, welfare, you know, you've got to be careful not to have arbitrary or capricious regulations, you know, if you want to avoid challenges on that. And that's one of the reasons why these medical centers were included is I sus- I suspect, although I'm not an attorney, that it might be hard to justify to say that if, you know, if the, if a medical use could be cited in a location that, you know, a day, a day clinic for psilocybin couldn't be cited there, you'd be looking to have justifications that said for health, safety or welfare reasons, this is different and couldn't be there. So as much as you, uh, as much as we can encourage and look for opportunities for vertical integration, it, uh, it, it will be interesting to see if, uh, there's any interest in not allowing these things to be in places where other medical clinics could be, but vertical integration wasn't possible. So there's some areas that they, it would be relatively, I suspect relatively difficult to say no to them, uh, that wouldn't allow the vertical integration. So that's a, I think that's why you see the structure in the memo, but your points taken about the opportunities for sport, uh, sporty use operations.
Thank you for your time. We want to be mindful of it. We can come back Wednesday if there.
Okay. Please do. And don't forget youth activity center. The, um, the fact that we never defined that word and how many times did that hold us up? So I, I know there's always those unintended consequences and, um, with the direction of the state still going forward and not really being that clear, I know, I know it's going to be more difficult than it might be. So thank you for all your analysis today.
Thank you.
We'll see you on Wednesday. Um, I believe we have item number three now? Thank you, Tarek.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Tarek Rawlings, I'm an associate planner with the Community Development Department. Today, uh, today's action item is a work session in preparation for a public hearing at a future date that we don't know of yet, so that's one question I have for the board today, is what dates you might have in mind for a public hearing? There's a couple in the front there, but this is for a plan amendment zone change proposal. Um, the applicant is named LBNW LLC. This is a proposal affecting three different tax lots along North Highway 97, um, near the, um, Central Oregon Forklift, um, business, if you've seen that, along the west side of 97 there. Um, the three properties, uh, in total acreage of about 19.12 acres, they're all zoned exclusive farm use at this time, and the proposal would be for a plan amendment to, uh, change the comprehensive plan designation of those properties from agriculture, which is their current designation, to rural industrial, uh, and then a corresponding zone change from the current exclusive farm use zone to a rural industrial zone as well. The original application included a Gulf 14 exception if it was deemed necessary to approve the application. There was originally a hearings officer, public hearing on April 26th, um, and there was a, a pretty lengthy open record period, and so a decision was rendered on July 12th, just last month, um, where there was a recommendation for approval, um, of that request, uh, kind of the, yes, sir?
Real quick, uh, so recommendation for approval, basically that just confirms that the application fits the criteria of Deschutes County Code. There's no opinion in there, it's just kind of.
It's a, so the.
Black and white process.
Right, there's a lot of, um, review of Deschutes County Code, there is review of some pertinent case law that's come up in past reviews.
That's the variable is the case laws, it changes all of a sudden.
I would say, yeah, that's probably the most direct connection to other, other regulations outside of county code. There's also, because it's a plan amendment and zone change, there's a lot of just direct reference to state law and administrative rule and statute at that point too, so those also factor in whether it's incorporated into county code or a standalone state law review. Um, so exactly, kind of a little bit of everything in this one, I would say. Uh, the public process so far was really pretty involved, we had a lot of public comments, mostly in support. Um, there was, uh, a, a number of respondents that were, some were surrounding property owners, some were just, um, folks that were in support of the, of the proposal. Um, there were, uh, there was opposition, there's, um, uh, written submittals and initial comments from Central Oregon Land Watch, as well as, uh, 1,000 Friends of Oregon, and a, a third opposing, um, viewpoint from one, uh, surrounding property owner who's adjacent to these three properties. Uh, the, um, record submittals during the, the hearings officer proceeding were only submitted by Central Oregon Land Watch, and so that's largely what the recommendation is responding to are some of those, um, oppositional points put forward, but again, it was a full recommendation of approval, essentially denying all of those argument points. If, uh, just into the nuance there, a lot of the argument points dealt with a loss of agricultural land, so, um, the, the perspective that this is currently zoned agricultural, exclusive farm use and therefore should be best used as farmland. Um, and so that's, that was one argument put for why this shouldn't be, um, approved or recommended for approval. Um, there was other, um, uh, questions on whether the, uh, transportation adequacy was ac- was adequate for this proposal, um, in terms of safety, all the way up to just compliance with Division 12 and, and Goal 12 of, um, kind of the state's transportation rules. Some concern with open space and how there's a landscape management corridor along the scenic highway there, um, and then a lot of, uh, similar argument that you've probably heard before had to do with the accuracy or validity of a, a Order One soil survey, um, used to demonstrate a lack of productive soils on the properties. Um, and so with that, um, I'm in part trying to find a, a future date for a public hearing that might work. Also interested to see if the board had, um, any time limits in mind for the applicant or other respondents. And really, um, there's, uh, three dates that, in working with the, the administrative assistant at the board, um, August 31st, September 7th, and September 21st looked like doable dates, um, and that's factoring in and, and considering kind of the other things you guys are looking at, um, uh, including other plan amendment zone changes. So, um, with that, I'm available for any questions you might have, and I'm just looking for some scheduling direction.
So Tarek, do we have any timeline that we need to be aware of at the, at the end of it? I mean, would it be best to go with August 31st?
It's not subject to 150-day review clock, which is typically the kind of time, uh, constraint that we're up against with land use, but, so I would say that it's, it's certainly discretion of the board, but, um, what, the, the biggest factor I've tried to, um, be mindful of are the other land use items and the other, um, unrelated items that you guys are, have a very full menu of in the coming month, or several months perhaps?
Yes. Okay. Does anybody have any, um, issues? Would it be best to go with, to the 7th or the 21st? I know the week before, the, the week in between the 7th and 21st, we will not be in session.
Right, that was another factor, exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, anything that fits in the schedule's fine with me.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any.
Should we go, uh, with the 7th as you'd suggested then, Commissioner?
Sure, I think that's fine.
Is there any, uh, other thoughts, totally open to any, any dates that might be mentioned, but that sounds, that's fine with me as well.
Okay.
All right, I'll, I'll shoot for the 7th then, if that sounds all right with the Commissioners.
Is it possible to note, does, do these initials, um, mean anything?
Not that I'm aware of, yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to go.
I think the NW is probably Northwest, I'll give that.
Yeah, I know, that's, I know, that's why I was getting that.
LLC is one I could help you with.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Tarek, that, that really helps me a lot.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Okay.
One question, just substantive, is, is there agricultural water associated with these lands?
Uh, there, there are irrigation rights on one of the three tax lots.
Okay, yeah.
Um, it's the northernmost and largest of the three. Uh, I will note, I guess, if there's more detail to that, that there's a very specific review of that condition within the HO process and throughout the public hearing.
Yeah, so I haven't reviewed that, I was just wondering.
Yeah, well, it's, it's a bit nuanced in that, though it does have irrigated acreage, but that is consistently leased back to the river each year, and that'll be a, a detailed point we go over in the, um, presentation and things like that before the public hearing, but just.
Yep, I'll study that one.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure if I have, have questions right now, but I, I do, um, I, I did want to start to draw a distinction between this proposal and the ACETI proposal, which I was supportive of. Um, you know, in, in that case, you know, Mr. ACETI's land is, is located on a major intersection off of, you know, with access off of Highway 97, in this case, we're talking about on and off onto 97, I assume.
Uh, there is a direct, um, access straight to 97.
Yeah.
These three properties, you're correct.
And that, uh, I mean, it's, that's a, it's a terrible place to be getting on and off of Highway 97. I mean, I, I get off at the, you know, at that 61st Street, um, interchange on a regular basis, and it is, um, it, it's pretty sketchy.
Sure.
Um, so, I mean, that would be one significant concern I have about this proposal, is if, if they, if they're proposing to, you know, uses where they would, people would be coming off on and off Highway 97 directly, trying to, you know, get to an industrial use, which might be a pretty intensive use. Um, I, I, I would like to know more about, um, the surrounding lands, I mean, I can see from this map that it's, um, state park property on one side, uh, it looks like it must be MUA or RR on, you know, on, on one side, uh, but, you know, what the, what the use is on the other side, um, just to understand a little bit about the, um, compatibility of this change with, uh, the adjacent land uses. Um, yeah, I, those are, you know, those are my, my two big questions at, at this point.
Sure. I can, just to add really basics, I can offer just to the, to the west is RR 10 in the sort of subdivision looking smaller lots there on the west, and then surrounding to the east and north are all exclusive farm use for the most part. You go a little further north, it turns into MUA 10, and then exactly southeast across the way is some property that's zoned open space and conservation, some of which is within, um, state park status, exactly.
And is the EFU land to the east and the north, do you know if that's currently being farmed?
Uh, two of the properties I looked at were currently being farmed and within farm tax deferral. Maybe a third, but they were kind of the larger acreage ones that were north of the property.
Okay, so there's, so unlike in the ACETI case, there is not rural, uh, industrial adjacent, immediately adjacent to the?
I'm not, and I apologize, I'm not super aware of the exact, um, details of the ACETI case and the surrounding properties, but you're, you're correct, in this case, um, there, there are, um, there's at least one adjacent, um, property that does have that deferral, I believe, but it's across the canal too, so that's, if that's any consolation for the separation.
Is that, is that what that, uh, blue hatched line is? That's the canal?
On the area map you're looking at there? That, there is, uh, yes, exactly, so it runs kind of the eastern border of the larger parcel all the way south and then starts to kind of follow the highway like you're seeing there exactly, before it crosses over.
Okay. Okay. Um, that's, that's helpful background thing.
Pretty good. Sure, any other questions for? And, uh, and also if you had thoughts on time limits too, certainly, um, able to incorporate that into the process, if you, um, wanted to impose any time limits or not.
Seven, what are usual, seven, seven, seven type of?
Oh, sorry, this would be more.
Or you mean like 30 minutes?
Yeah, exactly, more like the time.
So like 30 minutes and then, um, 20 and then another, uh, what, 10 minute for rebuttals?
Sure, and then do you want, uh, so a 30-minute initial applicant, you're saying?
Right.
Uh, and then 20 for opposition, 20 for rebuttal. Were you thinking, um, for, uh, members of the public, were, we going to do a, uh, three-minute again?
Normally we do three unless you feel that it warrants longer.
Uh, it, I think you, you could have that discretion, I think setting it at initially three and then going over is probably a safe bet.
Okay.
All right, I think those are the time limits I was looking for and the date I was looking for, so if there's anything else, I'd be happy to help you.
Okay. Great, thank you for, um, catching me this, this morning then too.
Sure, absolutely.
Just to go over this, thank you.
Yep, thank you very much, Commissioners, appreciate your time.
Thank you for yours. Okay, I believe we have item number four now, Senate Bill 391.
Another big topic.
Yes.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Will Groves for the record, um, I'm on your agenda today to discuss a local process to implement county code for Senate Bill 391 ADUs. I'd like to start with some breaking news from last week.
Breaking? It was breaking all right.
Yes. These, uh, ADUs were coupled to a number of fire protection measures from Senate Bill 762, and since your memo packet was uploaded, Oregon's Department of Forestry has withdrawn the Senate 7, Senate Bill 762 Wildland Urban Interface WUI maps, as well as the fire risk maps that were released in June. Uh, I'd like to quote some key language from the notice of that withdrawal of the maps from ODF, uh, I think it's helpful for context. They said, "While we met the bill's initial deadline for delivering on the map, there wasn't enough time to allow for the type of local outreach and engagement that people wanted, needed and deserved. Once this round of refinements is complete, we are planning to bring a draft of the updated map to communities for discussion and input. In response to input we received since posting, we have decided to remove the current iteration of the Wildlife Risk Map from the Oregon Explorer and withdraw the notices sent. Since we are withdrawing the initial map and notifications, the current appeals process will end and any appeals filed will become moot." So in the face of the withdrawal of these fire risk maps, it's unclear how or when to proceed with our local ADU process. We've coordinated.
So that means we just lost the 4,000 that we could do?
Well, I think we're about, we're about to talk about this.
Okay, I'm just like, please, we, we need housing. Okay, thank you, Will, sorry to interrupt.
No, no, this was, that was the, I made that face right away when I thought we, this had happened. So, uh, we've coordinated with Lane County, who's going through a parallel process, and it appears that they will proceed, uh, delaying the effective, the effective date of the ordinance to the adoption of final maps. Staff has identified some risks with that approach. Uh, there's certainly a lot of uncertainty about when the new maps might be released. Uh, also, there may be potential for legislative fixes next year for either 762 or ADUs, and if those happen, they might not align with a potential adopted code if we move forward at this time. Uh, so at the outset, staff's looking for board discussion and direction on whether to proceed with the program that we were setting out towards as of last week, and, uh, I have with me here, of course, Assistant Legal Counsel Marshall and Peter Gatawski, if you have any questions about that.
I, well, Lane County is proceeding? Is that being very brave and bold and they've got a housing issue too? Is that why they're proceeding?
So, uh, in the coordination, they, they're aware of this issue, and as of this morning, they're continuing to proceed and have internal discussions. They've already made it through their planning commission, and, uh, it'll be interesting to see what discussions they have, but at least as of this morning, they're continuing to move forward. So, uh, that was the one data point I had of a, a parallel county trying to go through this process as well. You know, certainly, uh, the perspective of pausing at this time to wait for additional certainty, uh, all things being equal, would be prudent, uh, but given the, the need for housing and the board's emphasis on this, it's not, it's not so obviously a showstopper that it's, uh, not worth considering proceeding in the face of this uncertainty, and so I thought this would be a great opportunity to have that discussion of the, kind of the risks and, and possibilities. The, the one that I'm, uh, most concerned with, and I, as I mentioned, was the possibility, it seems to me that the difficulties that the fire map and the WUI map, the risk map are having, may be severe enough that it pushes into the legislature next year. ODF has optimistically hoped to bring back new maps to the community, um, but it seems like there may be, this may be significant enough that it goes forward into the legislature. If that happens, um, and I'm purely speculating here, if that happens, um, there's some possibility that the rules change associated with this. and we adopt a local code that's out of sync. That, you know, the downside of that is that, the upside is that we may be able to get to ADUs for some people relatively quickly. The downside is that those may become non-conforming uses if there's changes in state law at how to approach those, which can be, it can be a difficult thing for both the owner and the county to administer those. Yeah, so those were the main, that was the main concern that we would have for proceeding. Also, I guess just the uncertainty at this time, you know, when we had the maps, we knew who was in and who was out and who would have to engage in defensible space and fire hardening. And at this point, that's back up in the air because the map no longer exists.
They are going ahead with the meeting on Wednesday night at our fairgrounds at 7:00 PM. Do you think that that will be indicative of what they think the direction is? Or do you think so many in our community that were so concerned are going to be there testifying? And it will put it back, you know, push it on to next year? I don't know, Nick, we've been working on this for a long time. Do you have any insight?
Commissioner, I don't. I was surprised to see that they were continuing with the meeting this Wednesday, although I think that's a good thing, is to continue the conversation that has been ongoing for a long time. And it's, it's actually, it's a really valid question for us to ask in some capacity, or at least to raise with ODF this, this week, because we either need clarity on how these are disconnected or they're integrated and what's a timely response to, to address it, to, to provide for this new housing opportunity.
So, so we could ask them Wednesday night?
And we're so, I'm just so appreciative that our Community Development Director, Peter Gatawski, will attend, and so.
Thank you, Peter.
I'll be there, too.
You said Lane County is proceeding.
As of this morning.
And the whole thing would be effective upon adoption of, or just publishing of a new map? Is that the idea? So a package will be there, it'll be ready to go, and it really can't land until there's a new map published by the state?
That's the approach I understand they're taking.
Yeah. And you're looking for guidance if we want to do that also? Is that the idea here? I mean, kind of the biggest.
I, I think the, the main choice here is that, you know, certainly you have a variety of things that you'd like your long-range staff to do. There's a law, a long list on the work plan. And so there's opportunities and costs associated with continuing to pursue, to move forward at this time during uncertainty. You know, the, if there's any advantage to continuing to proceed is that nothing happens until you adopt an ordinance. So for us to stay ready and move, for us to stay moving towards that target, you know, you can pull the plug at any time if for some reason it becomes obvious that there's insurmountable obstacles. But, you know, you are, you are allocating those resources that might be put towards other work plan items with some risk that things may become complicated in this uncertain time.
I mean, there are some things that, there's some substantial items that we need to grapple with that I don't think are related to wildfire risk. I mean, the questions about, you know, can you have an enormous garage connected to your 900 square feet of floor space? You know, whether it'll just be the corner that touches 100 feet or whether you want some, some certain amount of the building to be within 100 feet. So I, I think that there's enough things that we can work on that aren't super dependent upon the risk maps, that it makes sense to continue at least working on those in this, in this interim period. But that's, that's just my perspective.
I support proceeding at this time, also knowing that these, these meetings are happening around the state, because if there's more clarity, that'll be a lot more information for us. Either, yeah, we think we're going to be able to get a map out by some date, or it ain't going to happen. You know, so as soon as there's any kind of guidance from the state, but in the meantime, proceeding.
One of the really big things I think we need to grapple with is how we, how we design these parameters so that we're not encouraging people to just build an ADU that's going to become their primary residence and then they rent out the original house as a, as a short-term rental. Because that doesn't accomplish any of our goal of adding housing for, for residents of Deschutes County, and it doesn't achieve the intent of the legislation either. And I think it's a, you know, tied to some of those other questions, like how big does the garage get to be? I think that is a real risk that we are encouraging people to build, you know, 900 square feet and an enormous shop connected to it that's going to become their primary residence.
Man, I like that idea, though. That goes totally the other direction.
This piece of legislation was meant to provide secondary housing units to help our, you know, to help our housing crisis and particularly to help families that need workforce housing, senior housing, you know, housing for their kids. It was not meant to be an end run to give us the opportunity to build a new, a shiny new primary residence. So I, just working with the intent of the legislation, I, I don't think that a massive shop connected to your 900 square feet of, of living space is appropriate.
I'm just, yeah, private property rights and the free market system can help us. Because if we can add a structure on a property, it's going to add housing. It's going to be helpful. It's going to be multi-generations on the same property. It's going to be a rental for somebody. So I just, just philosophically, I wouldn't think that we need to limit how and why people do something. It's just going to add capacity. But we'll get there. That's exactly what we're planning on doing.
We could be adding a whole bunch of short-term rentals, which really doesn't help.
Which people would be in?
Visitors, yeah.
I did think it was interesting this morning, Will, that I had the conversation with someone who had, what, a 1,400 square foot? And he was, you know, didn't want to rent it. You know, he had hoped to move it somewhere so someone could actually live in it, and that wasn't happening. So in the situation today, thinking of what they did do with 762, I'm, I'm appreciative because I looked at some of their rating in South Deschutes County around Burgess, where I knew what their numbers were a couple of years ago out of the fire rating, and they actually were rated much more severe than I thought they should be. So I appreciate they're going to be, going back and looking at that. And I really hope this doesn't take another couple of years. So I would say we should keep going forward because we can be the leader. Don't you think? We've been, you know, this is something we need. We need more workforce housing. And I believe that there are the rules with 391. Are there not that it can't be a short-term rental? Isn't that one of the rules? Do you remember specifically?
The accessory dwelling unit can't be a short-term rental. But if you build a palatial, short-term, a palatial ADU, then the primary resident can move to the ADU and rent out their primary residence. There's no prohibition on that. So we can't be, basically, we can't be encouraging people to build a big new primary residence and calling it an ADU.
It's 900 square feet. That's.
But if you, if you allow them to have a 1,500 square foot garage attached to it, then, you know, that, that has all sorts of functional space to be used as a shop and other things, then it's not a 900 square foot house.
Well, I know there's a lot of illegal ADUs in Deschutes County, and I, I would really like to make some of them legal if at all possible. So let's hope this doesn't take forever.
Sounds like we're going to proceed with the discussion.
Yes, please.
And I appreciate this discussion as well. This is certainly something, this is a lever that's, you know, that's in the, that's in the text that will be, you know, presented to the community before the, before the planning commission and brought to you for ultimate decisions. So this is definitely that question that's being raised and the difference of perspective is something that's set up for, for discussion and resolution through this process. So with the, with the direction to proceed, and I definitely appreciate that, and certainly if we have any major news that would affect, that we'll come back to you and have those discussions with you. I was going to take a moment to walk you through Kyle's memo here and show you where we're at at the beginning of the process. So let's talk about what we've got in here is the amendment process, some hearing dates, and some draft amendment language. As we've discussed previously, Senate Bill 391 comes with some regulatory sideboards that are outlined in Table 1 of the menu memo. Importantly, these include zoning, acreage, location, and square footage standards, and we were just talking about some of those. There are some important provisions of Senate Bill 391 that didn't include clear definitions. And staff's initial approach to usable floor area, distance requirements, and evacuation staging are included in Table 2. And so you'll see those, you'll see those information in Table 2 with the usable floor area exclusive of exter, garages, carports, decks, and porch covers. The 100-foot sighting distance would be the distance from the existing single-family dwelling, from the wall of the dwelling to the nearest part of that usable floor area. And again, these are just starting points that staff has suggested as entering into the process. Certainly, a discussion of refinements anticipated. Finally, the adequate access for evacuation and firefighting requirements, with the safe evacuation plan meaning an identifiable route from the accessory dwelling to a staged evacuation area, where a staged evacuation area is a public or private location that the occupants of the rural ADU might evacuate to or reorganize. And then under staff's draft language, adequate access for firefighting equipment are met by providing the following: a written certification from the fire district on a form provided by the county that they meet minimum fire district requirements, a safe evacuation plan, and written authorization from the owner of the staged evacuation area that the occupants of the ADU can evacuate to that area. We're at a concern that if a business was identified as a evacuation staging location, certainly we want to make sure that the business owner was aware that they had been identified for that purpose in the event of a fire.
Question?
Yes.
A minimum fire district meets minimum fire district requirements? So just anything the fire district comes up with? Or, yeah, I'm just trying to, I was, as I was reading that word, I'm like, what are we saying here?
Has to be within a fire district, is that?
Access to the property meets minimum fire district requirements.
Yes, so there, if I may. For, again, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director. Commissioner, the thought was establishing clear and objective criteria that is established by, by each rural fire protection district. So it would be a checkoff list that just says you, you have at, rural fire protection district acknowledges that there's adequate access to the property and to enter the property in the event of an emergency.
The question, is that, is that a known thing or is that a new thing? I guess that's what I was going.
My understanding is it's an existing standard that they.
That's really.
I think that, yeah, there's some specific provisions that they need to access a property, like turnaround.
Well, yeah, well, being able to get, yeah, from, get somewhere, I agree. I understand what that, that is. I was just wondering if it was a new, new thing.
And we have reached out with them and months and months and months ago when we thought we were going to be starting this process. And they seemed comfortable with that, with that approach. And it allows that dialogue to occur between property owner and district. And again, most of these areas already have existing dwellings. So there's already a, a right-of-way, you know, public or private with an access easement that is allowing people to access their properties and if they need a medical or emergency assistance for, for the vehicles to get there.
I was just kind of a reminder that, I mean, some of the information I think I heard is that some resource land issues was what drove, I don't know how much of the map being pulled, but, you know, farm, irrigated farmland or, you know, big forest chunks. And where, if we're talking about defensible space, needles in the gutter, the first five feet, being able to get a fire truck to the front of your house, that's a whole different conversation than, you know, 180 acres of irrigated farmland that was zoned high fire risk. Or, you know, so I think there may even be a disconnect about what the struggles, what the state is struggling with and what even matters to us. Yeah, just some thoughts.
Okay.
So in addition to, in addition, in response to concerns, staff's heard from the board, the planning commission, and community members, staff's included a draft increase of the minimum lot size for ADUs to five acres in southern Deschutes County. And this is to limit impacts to groundwater quality in the sensitive area. There seemed to be significant interest in limiting the total impact of ADUs in that area. And so currently, staff has that teed up as a way to decrease that impact. But I see you have a question?
I'd really like to do some analysis on that, because I've heard it also. But it's usually people that are engaged, not, you know, not all, not all the property owners that have this parcel are the ones that are even hearing about this. So I just want to make sure that the people that have a three or four acre parcel kind of understand this conversation's happening. So some analysis, maybe a little bit outreach or whatever we need. And how many parcels are we talking? Because I know there's thousands of one acre parcels that are just not even on the list, right? They're just not even an opportunity. So I don't know, have a feel for it. So just some analysis on this.
Yeah, certainly. And I've got that later in the memo is that the, an increase into a minimum lot size of five acres in southern Deschutes County would preclude 654 potentially eligible.
How did you know? That was my question, too.
Well, so sorry, yeah.
Yeah, I was just like, okay, how is it taken out?
Yeah, I thought, I thought that might be interesting.
It's a great statistic. Thank you so much.
So 654 would be precluded by that jump from two to five acres, and it would leave 224 potentially eligible properties in the south part of the county. But I definitely hear your, your concern there.
Just having the people that, a couple, and is a couple hundred really that impactful also?
I mean, what if somebody had 4.6 acres? It would round up. That still means that it's clearly five acres and above.
Recommendation, and again, this is just a starting point. We can send out, if you'd like, we could send out a targeted mailer announcing the first evidentiary hearing to ensure that those residents in southern Deschutes County are aware of this, just this amendment. It's a starting point. But it's, again, it's what Todd Cleveland in our onsite wastewater division recommended. You're, you're trying to limit the number of nitrogen loading in a, in a sole-source aquifer. But again, we recognize that testimony and, you know, there may be some sub-areas and whatnot. And we thought the public process would be the, the avenue to bring that out. And ultimately, the board of county commissioners can decide if, if they want to set a limitation of, of five acres in the specific subarea, and actually the only subarea in Deschutes County that's being contemplated for a slightly larger minimum lot size or partial size.
Thank you.
And it may be interesting to talk to, to Todd Cleveland about, you know, right now, and acreage standard is easy to implement, easy to understand. You know, it may be that it's appropriate to look on a property basis, depending on how they're situated. You know, certain properties have over six feet of separation of groundwater and eligible frequently for conventional systems. So a different hitch may be that, you know, the property is eligible for a conventional system and has a certain amount of separation of groundwater. But the more nuanced you make the rules, the harder it is to implement them and greater uncertainty produces for the public as they try to decide if they should start down that path.
Well, that, I mean, and that's one of my questions about this kind of definition of South County. I mean, I assume that we are doing that based on where shallow groundwater is mapped, not just draw a longitudinal line across Deschutes County and say everything south of here is, is ineligible except for five acre parcels. Is that, is that correct?
And my understanding is that we're working from a definition in our draft, in our draft versions of the, of the ordinances, which aren't before you here today. I understand that we're working from a previously identified groundwater document that had identified the areas that were specifically impacted with regard to, regard to groundwater and, and nitrates.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we, we don't, we really don't want to be adding a lot more impacts in those areas, especially since the monitoring has been, you know, postponed in the last couple of years and we don't actually know what the conditions are.
Yes, thank you. That's definitely, so that's another lever that, you know, can be pulled one way or the other in the, in the process. Now, Section 4 of the memo discusses Senate Bill 762 and wildfire standards. Of course, we just discussed that. The R327 Building Coast standards, of course, won't be available for use until April 2023. So that's why frequently we've discussed with these ADUs the April date for first availability, if nothing else impedes them. Section 5 of the menu memo discusses anticipated property eligibility. And this is a summary of tax lots that's really at a high level. It doesn't include property, per property constraint analysis. So think of this as kind of a maximum that might be possible. The actual number of properties is likely smaller. Here's some highlights. There are 7,798 tax lots in the eligible zones of RR 10, MUA 10, UAR 10, and SR 2 and 1/2 that would be potentially eligible. So just shy of 8,000. A five, as we discussed, a five acre minimum lot size would, would reduce that by about 400 in South County, specifically in South County. Although it's important to remember that throughout the county, septic constraints may limit the developability of individual properties with ADUs. Septic upgrades may be difficult or expensive, depending on the specific property. It's also important to note that this process will require Goal 5 inventory analysis to evaluate impacts on existing wildlife inventories. There's about 1,300 potentially eligible lots in the deer migration corridor, about 450. 450 in the deer winter range, and 39 in elk habitat, and staff is preparing this Goal V, uh, inventory analysis to look into those conflicting uses.
And are those numbers for the existing winter range, or the potential future, future winter range?
Existing.
So when, you know, if and when we complete that inventory update, that those numbers may increase?
Those numbers will increase significantly.
Okay.
Finally, table three of the memo includes an ambitious schedule to conduct a local process targeting adoption this year. Uh, it's something that looks possible, but you can see that, um, the calendar ends on December 28th, so this is a, this is a sincere effort to, uh, get this done this year. The, we've got a number of things moving simultaneously, so this is, this is ambitious, but seems feasible. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
And, and actually, there, uh, if I could, just, just to build off of Will's, Will's calendar remarks, you know, there's, you, we'll certainly be tracking the Oregon Department of Forestry's mapping effort as it pertains to, uh, wildfire mitigation and Senate Bill 762. You know, in the event that, uh, we understand it, if it takes longer, if it, if their effort's going to, you know, given the public outreach that they're talking about, the appeal process, we actually might have a, a little more time in, in, in the fall, if the board wants, you know, to continue a hearing, because I don't, again, the, the adoption of, of an ordinance, um, can't really occur until we know the wildfire mapping, and so the process really could potentially end, um, once the, once the hearing's closed and, and, you know, the boards directed us on, on fit, on completing the amendments and then setting them aside as we wait for the, the ultimate wildfire map to be acknowledged at the state level, or to the extent that the legislature decouples Senate Bill 391, the rural accessory dwelling unit, from the wildfire mapping, then we could, we could come back to the board and that adoption process would be rather swift. But we don't need to, to do a first or second reading or an adoption with the LCD again, because we don't have the wildfire map, and we don't know its, its application in Deschutes
I'd just like to, um, unpack a little bit my concern about, um, ADUs being constructed and then primary residences being converted to short-term rentals. A lot of this, I think, is, is, uh, is just from looking at the numbers. So I, I myself went through the process of building an ADU at my house about four years ago, and I can tell you that if you have 150, 200, 250, $300,000 to, to put towards something, or, you know, you're willing to incur that amount of debt, there are all sorts of places you can invest, uh, with a better return on investment than creating, uh, you know, rental, a rental housing unit. Um, and so how would, you know, what, you know, what's, what's a, you know, economically rational thing to do, um, if you're, if you're interested in this, you know, in, in adding an ADU to your property, but, you know, you're, uh, you're not thinking you're going to make enough money from a long-term rental to, to move forward? Build something that you would live in yourself and convert your house to a short-term rental, and, you know, you've got a cash cow on your hands. So I, I, I think it's a, it is a real risk that people are going to take this opportunity to, um, to convert, uh, you know, to, to build an ADU and convert their primary residence to a short-term rental, which, again, does nothing to address our, our long-term housing, um, shortage, uh, in our community. And, um, I, you know, that, 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 that's what we need. We, we don't need more short-term rentals. We, we, um, and, you know, we need all kinds of housing, but we particularly need housing that is affordable. And part of the way that, um, SB 391 kind of honors that intention of creating housing that's affordable is by, um, facilitating, enabling, enabling, authorizing the creation of these modest, uh, housing units. Uh, 900 square feet with what would, I would imagine would be a reasonable amount of garage space associated with that. I mean, 900 square feet, you can maybe fit, uh, you know, you can certainly fit your elderly parents' couple, you could certainly fit, you know, your, um, your, um, college graduate kid and their partner. You maybe fit, uh, you know, your college graduate kid and their partner and their newborn baby, you know, for, for a while, but it's not, you know, 900 square feet is not, uh, intended to be enough, uh, living space for a family of five. Uh, it's, you know, I, like, I, you know, I've, I've lived in some fairly modest homes and, and, you know, I couldn't fit a family of five in a 900-square-foot house. So the, these were deliberately intended to be smaller, more modest units, uh, in order to put them within reach of people who, uh, you know, you know, people who need housing at an affordable level, workforce housing. So the, the idea that, uh, this system could, you know, facilitate basically, uh, addition of, addition of buildings, but no addition of long-term housing, I think is a real concern and, and something that I, I would like us to try to guard against.
I actually lived in 900 square foot, and I, and when I put it together that this is what the state was talking about, I was, actually, it was, it was pretty nice. Now, I was a family of five, um, and, but, you know, 900 square feet is, is nice, and when you see a lot of things that are being built today, um, you know, they've gone, in some cases, much smaller, and then, of course, you have the other side of the equation where it's, you know, it's, it's much larger. But I, um, I was really happy when I remembered back to living in those 900 square foot, um, manufactured homes and how nice it was. Stephanie, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Adair and Commissioner Chang, that was a great question. Hi, Commissioner DeBonne.
Hello.
Um, you know, I, I was thinking, and I haven't, um, done the research yet, but the first things that come to my mind are, um, the authorization of a new structure, you know, which would be the ADU, and the rules that go along with that. That's, that's all well and good that you can't have that for short-term rental. I don't know that you can apply something retroactively to a use that, that includes the potential, you know, so the existing single-family home. I don't know that we can look back and say, no, you cannot use something that's already been permitted and instructed and used and authorized in the zone to kind of add a restriction. Once you, once you put an ADU on there, you can no longer, um, run out your single-family home for short-term rental. Actually, the house that we bought last year, uh, here in Bend, um, had been short-term rental, the, the owner was just gone. There was no ADU on the property, but, you know, there's a lot of turnover. I've had many people come up to me and say, oh, yeah, I've stayed at your house, which is kind of funny, kind of strange. Um, but, but I'm, I'm really, truly speaking off the top of my head right now. I'd want to see, uh, whether that, um, basically retroactive, um, application of, of a new ordinance authorizing ADU.
I, I'm not talking about a legal restriction, I'm talking about, um, discouraging or encouraging that, that pattern, you know? And, and basically, you know, if you take, if you say 900 square feet of living space and you add 1,000 square feet of garage shop space to it, it makes it a lot more enticing to someone to move out of their primary residence into the ADU than if you have, uh, an appropriately scaled garage to a 900 square feet of living space.
Commissioner, yeah, I'm just offended that you would think that you're going to tell somebody on their private property what to do and how to do it. I mean, it just doesn't sound like it's the right way to, to, to govern or proceed. Private property, one opportunity, another small 900 square foot with rules and requirements, yes, it's going to be expensive, but you're, you're pre-mandating how it's utilized?
SB 391 is creating a new development right opportunity where none existed before.
So, so the poor people of Oregon should be thankful...
They've put in, they've put inside...
Big old government that we can use our property for something else, a little bit more.
Welcome to the state of Oregon.
Yeah, so I'm just pointing out, I, I feel very definitely...
If you don't like the laws of the state of Oregon, you're welcome to move.
We're going to be changing them.
Okay.
In the same way that, that, uh, Deschutes County has been, uh, trying to change the laws of the state of Oregon for the last 15 or 20 years with very limited success.
So that's interesting, so when you say, if you don't like this, the, the laws, move?
That's what some people do. They walk away, they...
But you'd be asking me to move if I don't like them? And I'm a commissioner with you?
I'm not, I'm not telling you have to move, I'm just saying, if you don't like it, you can move.
Well, I would like to say that I know...
Well, and I, I would like to have productive conversations up here at the board here, so I'm, I'm really...
You don't like the tax, if you don't like the tax laws in the state you live in, you can move. You don't like the land use laws in the state you live in, you can move. That is your freedom, right?
Or you can work to change the laws, that's the other side of the question.
Yeah, so there's a different philosophy there.
We do live in America, so that's the really wonderful news.
And I, and Deschutes County has been a leader in trying to change state land use laws for many, many years with very limited success.
Oh, I think, I...
And I think that that is...
We've done pretty well.
I, I believe that that is a colossal waste of resources, the taxpayers' resources.
Well, I did want...
Thank you for sharing.
Yes, I do want to say that I know someone who's working on having, um, where you can buy kits to do an ADU and a small house kit, and that company is, you know, trying to be ready for when the opportunity is available. You know, a lot of times when you can build, buy a kit, make it simple, you know, you just have to go to Home Depot, order your kit, it gets delivered, it gets put up, and...
You have some in the parking lot sometimes, too.
I know, and they're very...
That is awesome, and that's what we want to be ready for, and that's why I'm encouraging us to move forward with, uh, with working on these ADU rules so that we're ready.
Okay, I think that's what, um...
We all agreed on that.
We did agree, we did agree, so, and, yes, well, thank you.
Thank you for the clear direction.
Good, thank you, Will. Thank you for all those numbers, that was excellent, thank you for...
Of course, I didn't flip to the next page to see that.
No, and thank you for joining us. I'm sure that... Yes, we will be seeing more of you. All right, so I believe we're on item number five now.
So I communicated with Whitney on my, my, my thoughts on this, and I didn't turn in some numbers like the rest of you did, but...
Yes, thank you.
We'll go from there.
Very helpful, Commissioner DeBonne. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. I'm, um, here today to talk to the board about an RFP process we've been engaged in for state legislative representation and lobbying services. As the board knows, um, we issued that RFP in June and sought proposals from qualified individuals to provide lobbying services on behalf of the county. We received five proposals, which the board independently scored. Um, based on those scores, we, and conducted interviews with three finalists at the end of July, and then the board individually scored and ranked, um, those, those three finalist firms. And so, um, today I'm here to check in with you on that process, to seek your direction on next steps. We outlined, um, a handful of options for the board in the staff report that's included in today's meeting packet. Um, we could move forward and, uh, select a firm to provide lobbying services. We could reject all proposals. Um, we, staff is happy to go out and obtain additional information from one or more proposing firms, or we could invite one or both firms that were not selected for an interview to interview. And so really a range of options for the board's consideration, and happy to answer questions you may have on, on any of those next steps.
So I'm so glad that we had all three of them, um, you know, present. In-face interviews are so much more effective, I am incredibly appreciative of that, and if you have gotten Commissioner DeBonne's oral input, is it possible then that we do have someone who's, um, number one?
We do. It looks like, based on, um, the ranking scores that I received from the Commissioner's Northwest Policy Advocates, um, was, came out, um, based on your rankings as, as the top firm, um, but certainly happy to have the board have discussion about that, and, and like I said, a range of options for you in terms of your next steps with this.
Okay, well, I'm happy to proceed with them. What the other Commissioners say?
I would say that, you know, my, uh, my weighted rankings came up with a one and a two, but literally my, my raw score, there was one-point difference, 88 versus 87, so, um, I, um, I would be, um, I would be happy with either of the, the top two ranked firms.
Yeah, and I'd be, uh, you know, real pleased to be able to offer this to Northwest Policy Advocates. We had great interviews, all three companies, and they're all, uh, you know, engaged and influential in the state of Oregon, we're setting up for a legislative session. Yeah, so I, I like this, uh, selection also, the ways it worked out.
That's great, so, um, if it, if it is helpful, um, staff will return, uh, with a notice of intent to award for Northwest Policy Advocates, and will work with legal to prepare that and bring that back for your consideration.
Okay, and I do wrote, I wrote down in my notes, they will, as far as the budget goes, they will be flexible with us and, um, give us...
Got that on the record.
Yes, I wrote it down just so, you know, when we're negotiating what, what our costs will be.
Yes, and, um, staff will plan to, um, negotiate that contract following the notice of intent to award process and period, and they also echoed that in their written proposal, um, that intent and, um, ability to be flexible, so.
Right.
Dave, I don't know if I'm missing any person...
No, other than if the board wants to speed up the process, if you, you could actually give Nick, County Administrator, authorization to sign that notice of intent, then we could probably have it out in the mail tomorrow, and that'll start the seven-day protest period.
And we do need to, um, get ahead because we've only got like, uh, five weeks to go before we need to get that first legislation into Salem. So that's a, could we have a motion then, please?
I move, uh, to authorize County Administrator's signature to notice, uh, issue a notice of intent for award for, uh, legislative services.
Northwest Policy Advocates?
To Northwest Policy Advocates.
And I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the Chair of Justice. So Whitney, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We got it, that was a great process, because we started quite a while ago on that. Thank the other companies for applying also, because we did some other, uh, reviews, uh, and as I say, this is, uh, it's a big state, a lot of moving parts, and, uh, yeah, we'll see what, what happens in the next legislative session, and we'll hopefully be ready for it.
We'll, we will be ready for it.
Yep.
So that's the...
Okay, no hope, good, good. Hope's not a strategy, sorry about that.
Yeah, it's two, it's the long session, so we must be ready for it.
Sounds great.
Great, and then we have, um, State of the County?
Thank you so much.
So Commissioners, our next item, as you know, um, the board's State of the County presentation is coming up on August 16th at OSU Cascades, and this is a presentation that you'll be giving, um, in partnership with the Ben Chamber, uh, to Ben Chamber members. And so staff's prepared a draft, uh, presentation that I'm hoping to review with you today, um, get some feedback from you. Some of you have provided me feedback already, which is great. I'm in process of tracking down a few of the items that have been suggested, so you'll see some placeholders in this draft. But just looking for board feedback on the draft, uh, today, and then planning to return to you on Wednesday with an updated draft to talk a little bit more about logistics and any other refinements you might want to see to, to what we have in front of you. So, um, I'm not sure if Chair Adair, you'd like me to just walk through the presentation, um, with you, or if you'd like to just...
You want to gallop through it?
I, yeah, I would. All right, I will just go ahead and, and kind of walk through verbally, and then if, if anyone wants to pause or provide feedback, feel free, um, I think we'll...
Okay, good, thanks, Whitney.
Okay, perfect. So, um, kind of a standard introductory slide to start, um, a slide that touches on growth and population forecast numbers, and then really kind of giving the board an opportunity to talk about a few hot topics. I'll go ahead and pause there just in case there's feedback. I know sometimes this hot topic slide tends to be where we move content a little bit for these types of presentations, so.
Yes, we could spend three hours talking about hot topics.
We could, and just, that's a good, um, so Chamber staff has allocated 45 minutes for the presentation and 10 minutes for Q and A following, so that should give you kind of a sense of...
Okay.
How many hot topics we might want to include. Um, I think right now, as it sits, this is a pretty meaty draft, and so if we're adding, we may want to think about finding some places... I think right now as it sits, this is a pretty meaty draft. And so if we're adding, we may want to think about finding some places to trim as well, just to make sure you have time for those questions.
So is the hot topics bullet items relative to the slides in order behind it? Is that the idea?
You know, this is kind of an evolving draft. I think my intent is that we'll reorder this to mirror what's going to follow right now. It's not a perfect match.
So the structure's going to be, these are the bullet points, and then as we step through them, we'll see them.
Yep. Okay. We worked with Finance to kind of do just a visual breakout of your ARPA investments. And so this is a little bit of an opportunity to talk about the investments you've made to date. I can obviously pull supporting talking points into this slide, but we tried to keep it light with the visuals. So you can kind of talk about broad categories of investment. If there are specific areas that the Board would like to touch on, I would be happy to coordinate with you on that either now or following up after today, just so we can make sure we have the information you want to speak to for this slide.
So one of my couple of thoughts, just throwing out stuff right now. So ARPA investments, federal dollars authorized to go to local jurisdictions. We should celebrate that fact right up front. You know, this is just a, you know, we haven't had this before. This isn't this kind of situation. Also, you know, some rules are in place, but we all, and maybe these are just the talking points we'll use as we're going through it. You know, as a Board of Commissioners, we just kind of got on task, getting focused, getting people to apply for some dollars and committing to distribution of those dollars. And I'm really proud that we're not sitting on a bunch of unallocated dollars at this point in time.
Actually, I would prefer that it says thirty-eight point four million, not more than. It's almost half a million dollars. And I feel that as long as you're having the percentages there, I think it's, we need to be more transparent.
So four hundred thousand dollars is an influential amount.
Yeah.
We may want to, and I was just actually thinking about that tag. We may want to actually have that number reflect to the amount you've invested, not the amount we're going to receive, just because that's a little bit lower. So I think I may update that line to reflect actual investment to date, if that works for you, Commissioner.
Sure.
All right. Okay. And then-
And then also another, just, as I say, just ideas. You know, as we were making these investments, there were other investments happening at the state legislatively and by departments. You know, I'm thinking, you know, childcare and job training jumps right out at me. There was full panic in the job training workforce investment area. And all of a sudden, there's this big package got put together, you know. So there's, the world was even moving as we were making these decisions.
Okay. No, that's good. I'll pull out some-
Yeah, and we can review it again.
Sounds good.
Just sharing.
I mean, if we're drafting out the text for this slide, I think maybe a little bit more on each of these categories. So the childcare, twenty point six percent of that thirty-eight point four million went to childcare facilities and workforce, workforce training efforts.
Okay, no, that's definitely, yep, we can round that out. And I may give you some talking point data about how many childcare slots were created, that type of thing in the talking points, if that's helpful. Okay. And then a little bit of a new structure for the slides that follow. I tried to break these out using the Board's goals kind of as subsections. So you'll see healthy people, safe communities. You'll see your goals reflected in the presentation. And nothing, you can either highlight that or not, but it was, I thought, a newer way to kind of organize these next updates. So we have a slide on houselessness as well as community health and the stabilization center in that section.
Redmond's actually nine hundred thousand. That's an error.
For Beth Lemon?
Mm-hmm.
And then moving forward into safe communities, providing information on wildfire in terms of text alerts, emergency alerts through nine-one-one. Sorry, Commissioner Chang, did you want to go back to? Okay. And just where folks can follow the Sheriff's Office specifically for evacuation information. Fuel's reduction. I'm working with Ed Keith to get a little bit more information for this slide. So you're going to see some placeholders. And I think we're going to continue to massage this language on this slide as we move forward. So on Wednesday, you will likely see a cleaner version of this.
It's excellent to have this page.
Okay.
You know, I think it's really important. Remember how I wasn't connected last year? I should have been getting some texts, so.
I think stabilization center could and should be part of the homeless page somehow, or maybe put them together. My point is that's kind of our lead thing that we offer. You know, if somebody's truly in crisis, public safety or otherwise, this is, man, we did it, and it's going, it's funded, and we need partners in funding in the future. But I'm just thinking, it's kind of the same topic as the previous slide. So it's just maybe a way to, yeah.
Move it.
I mean, I disagree. You know, it's twenty, twenty-five percent tops of the people who are going to the stabilization center are homeless. So, I mean, it's not, it's not no overlap, but it's not the same thing.
Well, and this is, yeah, this is where we still have a community conversation about, you know, how do we organize our thoughts on this? So and maybe this could be a good exercise for us a little bit. I mean, I'm, and James Cook and I were trying to do this at the fair the other day. It's like I'd say something, and he'd say something. It's like, well, we weren't even talking the same language. You know, so you're responding to my statement. I was just trying to group it differently.
Yeah. I mean, I think the stabilization center is just as much a public safety operation as it is a I'm more a public safety operation than it is associated with homelessness because it saves law enforcement so much human resource time.
Well, and yeah, I mean-
And it provides a better place to take people who law enforcement people are dealing with.
So, well, and this is, I mean, how valuable would it be if you and I can hand it back and forth and talk, you know, either how we see it differently or how we say the words differently but mean the same thing. As I say, Jim and I were just trying to do this the other day at the fair.
Yeah, we only have forty-five minutes, though, and-
I think we, yes.
It's a pretty substantial hour point presentation. And I, so many of the Leadership Redmond or Leadership Bend-type presentations we've given, we have eaten up all the question and answer times. So I'd really-
We won't do that. Whitney won't let us.
We might.
Really like this to be very disciplined about getting through a lot of information and leaving time for questions and answer, as valuable as the back and forth might be.
Okay.
Well, yeah, so I mean, I'm just getting started on that conversation. We don't need to have it now. But I mean, stabilization center, if somebody's homeless or houseless, they may not be stable. And I'm not, it's just, it's a place you get services offered, and let's get you on a track. So, yeah, we don't need to go any farther than that right now.
It's only a fraction of the people who go to the stabilization center who are homeless.
But twenty-five percent is a quarter. So it definitely, it's been used, utilized by our community and other counties.
Seventy-five percent are not homeless. Doesn't, you know, the vast majority of the people who use the stabilization center are not homeless.
If it works, I might be able to slide it, slide it, so it's the slide following the first slide in, under healthy people.
Because then that statement could be made. That'd be helpful.
And then I do worry that Slide Seven, which is the first slide in the healthy people section, is pretty, there's a lot of content on it already. So I think leaving them, if it works to leave them split as two slides with stabilization center as its own slide, that probably will be helpful for someone that's trying to digest the information. But we could have them follow each other concurrently, if that works for the Board.
I'm kind of lost now, which slide?
If I slide stabilization center right after the houselessness slide?
And then, yeah, and then you said-
And this other one that says community health, maybe that should come first among those.
Yeah, we could do that. That's a great suggestion.
Oh, there you go, because then-
Mm-hmm, they all kind of follow.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, so I'm going to catch back up to safe communities. I think we have two slides in on the landfill siting process. And so this is obviously something that we're really working to get the word out and had a lot of presence at the fair about trying to educate folks about where we are in this process and what they can expect. So a couple of slides there in terms of what we're doing and how folks can engage in upcoming milestones for the project.
And then somewhere in the notes for this section on solid waste, we can, can we also talk about diversion, recycling, composting, and all of those things that we're doing to take the pressure off the landfill?
Yep. Okay. Okay. And then we're going to transition into transportation. I left this light. I'll probably, my thought was in the notes section, we could give you a bulleted list with projects that are grouped by, you know, where they're located. But the transportation slides, when we break them out by project, sometimes it's difficult to decide what is in and what's out. So this is a little bit lighter than it has been in years past. But we certainly can add, if the Board would like to, some specific project-related slides.
Yes, what is that? Do you have the, is that like buck corn or something?
Oh, I am not going to guess. I can go back and pull that file photo and let you know which one that is. It's a rural road.
No, I support.
One thing that Bend Chamber members might be interested in would be the county's substantial role in the North Ninety-Seven Corridor project. That's a pretty big deal for the Bend community.
I can definitely coordinate with Chris, and we can add a slide there.
Well, yeah, so we can either have bullet points, talking points, or I support, yeah, just having transportation because it's going well. We're doing projects. We're partnering on some big things. We don't need to spend a lot of time talking about it.
That could be the background slide, actually. The background picture would be a picture of the Highway Ninety-Seven Corridor project.
Okay, that works well.
Something more relevant to Bend.
All right. And then we're going to transition into community planning. So this is a lengthy list. But just, and I will likely add a QR code onto this slide so that folks can get to these project pages a little bit more directly if they want to. But this is kind of a snapshot of all the things that planning has underway at the moment, or will have underway soon.
Perhaps my only suggestion here would be to add a link to the CDD's webpage, just because that's where all these projects will be highlighted. And they can find then links to whichever one they're interested in.
Is accessory dwelling units in there?
Second bullet.
Oh, okay, I was just looking for the word ADU and scanning.
Okay. And then transitioning into housing stability and supply. This is one of the slides that's a bit in progress and draft at this point, but trying to highlight some of the affordable housing efforts and investments that the Board has made. Commissioner Chang, I know you had provided some specific feedback that I'm going to follow up with Christie on after we break today. So this slide should transition a little bit before you see it on Wednesday. But happy to take any other feedback from the Board on this slide.
I believe we'll have to update the core community on here, too, after today.
Actually, the, one of the ones I specifically thought we should mention, which is the ARPA, was actually an ARPA investment with Habdat, the Ben Redmond Habdat for Humanity, which I don't know how much Christie is tracking, because it was money, not land.
Yep, and I can follow up with Dan on that.
And with this slide, with the affordable housing slide, it might be helpful here to highlight the allocation the Board has made to the Bend Chamber, who's hosting the event.
I think Commissioner Chang had that in his notes as well, so. Perfect. Okay. And then service delivery, talking about capital, what?
It's just such a great picture.
And a big smile.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's a good plug for nine-one-one. Capital projects, talking about the courthouse and North County campus on that slide. I think we do have the option of talking about the parole and probation expansion, but it felt maybe a little bit less visible for the community than these other two, but completely at the discretion of the Board in terms of what you'd like to cover.
This would be-
No, that's something that's hopefully going to get done.
If we were trying to collapse stabilization center into one of the other slides, we could give that as a recent example of a successfully completed capital project.
Okay. And then I need to update our current recruitment for committees, but kind of an opportunity for folks to either volunteer or apply for jobs with the county. And then transitioning us into questions. So that's where we're at with the draft. Again, pretty rough at this point, but I will plan to send out this draft to departments that have content in it so they'll scrub it and make suggestions before I come back on Wednesday. And then just open to any other thoughts or feedback that the Board has.
We put jobs available above advisory committees. Let's lead with that.
Okay.
Signing bonuses. Do we have those? Some departments we do, don't we? Yes.
Okay. So I will be back on Wednesday with an updated draft. And if the Board would like to, I can provide kind of a-
Oh, go ahead. The fair was the most successful fair ever on Saturday. I believe the numbers were over the top. So we might just want to acknowledge that.
Okay, that's great.
There were a lot of people from Bend at the fair.
I will add that, a fair slide.
I know. Not that we need more to say, but I do think that's important, and it's relevant for this month.
It's great. No, I'm happy to add that. Perfect. Well, I will provide kind of a breakout of estimated time per slide when I come back for the Board, just so we can kind of gauge length. And then depending on how the Board would like to handle it, we can talk about who might take what slide on Wednesday. Or do kind of a more open-ended approach, whatever works best for you.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Whit.
Thank you, Annie.
Appreciate all the good things. Okay, do we have any other items? I know we have people waiting in the room. They thought we were timely. And I guess we're not totally timely.
Yeah, so last week we didn't have Board meetings. But yeah, the county fair was quite an event. I was all over, having a good time. We could put a little, yeah, thirty-second video of me getting dunked in the dunk tank, maybe as part of this. But really had a good time. Jeff did a great job. The Fair Association, the exhibitors, the vendors, I mean, it's quite an operation. It was the presence by the Sheriff's Office, and that was, you know, in response to other things happening around. But I mean, it was so positive seeing just the Sheriff's deputies, just the socialization with the Sheriff's deputies onsite was real positive. So very successful county fair last week.
And it truly covered a lot of different things in our world. And I was appreciative that they had brought in, I don't know if you saw the display, for people that have served America who passed since nine eleven. And so those pictures were incredibly overwhelming. So I was really happy that it was there on the grounds, and it was, you know, you could walk by it and see it. And also, I think they had the best corn dog I've ever eaten in my whole life. So, over by the sheep barn.
That's right.
And I'm very excited that I bought an underweight pig. I've never bought a pig before, so. Sharing a pig with a friend, and he was underweight. So he had, has to go back home for a while. And maybe I should just get him for a pet, right, Nick? Can you hear my husband? Oh, yes, now we have a pet pig. Oh, honey, you said I couldn't have any sheep, so we'll have Oinkie. But it was, it was an amazing fair.
That's where bacon comes from.
I know, only eight pounds of bacon per one pig, though. I did learn that. That is really not enough. And I want to acknowledge Roxy put the rodeo indoors. It was a sellout. A fully attended rodeo crowd on Saturday night. Amazing, amazing. She really went way beyond. Wrangler came in and sponsored. And to get a company, a national company like that, to come in for a Northwest professional rodeo, she had to do some amazing conversations, and I'm really proud of the job she did. So thank you to Jeff, the whole association. They gave up their whole week, and they really, they worked so hard. So I'm, you know, it was an amazing. And there were people from all over the world, I mean, all over the country. Talked to somebody from- Talked to somebody from Germany who actually was at the fair. So people from all over the world were there having a great time. Should we go to executive, then? Any comments, Nick? Did you need...
No comments for me. I don't know if you wanted to take a five-minute break?
Okay, let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll go to executive. Thank you very much.
We'll do...
And we're almost on time.
We'll do this. We'll do this one first.
Recording stopped.
Are we, are we almost on time?